...introduce yourself, brief bio, where you're from originally, how'd you get to Portland, why do you want to be on the school board, what do you do for a living? We'll have some questions for you. We are here for the benefit of our readers, so we'll tape this. The tape goes up when the endorsements come out. And so if we move you along, or cut you off, or redirect you, it's not because we're rude, it's just because we have a lot to do. And I want to make sure we get the information our readers need. So we will start at this end of the table. Josie, if you're ready, if you could tell us. Well, you're not ready, because you're dogged.
How much time do you want that initial piece to take?
Couple of minutes. We'll cut you off, it goes too long. We'll start at this end of the table.
Thank you. Yeah. So my name is Zach Bab. I'm from the Chicagoland area originally. I came out here to Portland in 2000 to go to Reed. And I was a religion major back then, and my parents decided that they didn't want to invest in that, so I left for 10 years. But I always wanted to come back to Portland and continue my education. I just really love the city. So I came back in 2010, after working for Starbucks and Apple for 10 years, and studied physics. While back at Reed, I had the opportunity to meet with some entrepreneurs in Portland, and got a chance to actually start GlobeChirpa here in town with Nat Parker, Michael Gray. If you don't know, it's a, we're the startup that made the TriMet Ticket App, and I was the primary mobile engineer for that endeavor. And so I've been working for them, we're now called Movable. We were acquired by Movable, which is a subsidiary of Daimler, two years ago. And, you know, we've just been expanding and delivering on the transit experience around the country. So, over the last couple of years, I've wanted to turn some of my attention to policy and politics. Education's been my number one issue, and so after reading about the Tom Kohler stepping down, I figured I'd throw my hat in the ring for running for school board. And really what I want to do is bring my analytical focus, and my sort of systems focus to education, and trying to create the best education system that we can here in Portland.
Do you have any children?
I don't.
Have you, go ahead. Have you, what kind of civic engagement have you had prior to this race?
This is...
Starting here.
Starting here.
Okay. Okay. Did you...
Jumping right into the tough stuff.
Yeah, that's right.
Did you graduate from Reed then yet?
I did not, no.
There's still time.
Yeah, still time. I've dropped out of college.
It still lives.
About times at Reed.
Yeah.
That's good. Okay, Julia?
Great. So I'm Julia Brim Edwards, and I'm from Portland. I'm a proud graduate of Portland Public Schools. I attended Glenko Elementary, it was a K-8 at the time. I graduated from Washington Monroe High School, was Washington High School until my junior year, and then changed, merged with Monroe. I'm a, for the past 18 years, I've been a parent activist in Portland Public Schools. And so I've done, I think I've done sort of the whole range of things, whether it was going on field trips, serving on site councils, done just about classroom volunteer, anything you can imagine, at a school-based level. But I've also been a leader at the district-wide level, or city-wide level. I was on the school board from 2001 to 2005 during a very difficult time period. And I think what, and I'd just sort of summarize sort of my parent experience, I've really been a leader for 20 years, both inside the district, so it's sort of Inside the Belly of the Beast, and I think been a strong, effective leader inside. But I've also played a role, actually for the majority of the time, as sort of an outside parent activist, pushing the district, I think, to do the right thing related to students. And the question that often has come up in the last three weeks is, like, why are you running again? And I think even though I got back in, I got into the race about three weeks ago, I would sort of attribute it back to 2012, when my youngest was a high school student, and the district made a decision to effectively shorten the school year, or the school day for high school students. And for 83% of the high school students in Portland, they were going to have a mandated shortened school day, late arrival, early dismissal, study halls with 200 kids, and no instruction happening. And that was a catalyst for me to sort of get back involved deeply into school issues. And I organized a citywide coalition. We spent two and a half years basically fighting the district. And what I came out of that feeling was, this was just one example of the district not having strong, effective, accountable leadership, either on the school board or in the superintendent's office. And so I've fully re-engaged since then, and really tried to push the board to sort of deliver on its role in the system, which is, you're accountable to the community, you need to be transparent, you need to be united behind a vision, and be able to be delivering a budget and aligning the resources against the district's mission. And I don't think they've done that. So I thought that running for the board would allow me an opportunity to help Portland when I think they're at a sort of a big fork in the road, either continuing to, like a long, slow deterioration, or fulfilling its promise to our students and our community. And I do think there, that, I'm optimistic that we can get back on the other path. Otherwise, I wouldn't have run. I think I'll bring some expertise and skills and experience and relationships to, and also a track record of having changed the board in the past.
Why didn't you not run for a second term in 2004?
So in 2000, so it was four years, but in dog years. It actually was much longer, so if you weren't here at the time. When I got on the board, the board was very dysfunctional. There was an interim superintendent. We, in the next year, went into, the country went into a deep recession. We were facing five years from, cutting five weeks off the school year, closing a whole host of schools, needing to get cost containment in every labor union agreement, recruiting a new superintendent. So I spent four years, and I, when I, my term was up, and thinking about, should I run again? My kids were all young in an elementary school, and I felt like I had helped turn the ship around. But when I, by the time I left the board, we had a strong, united board that didn't always agree, but certainly respected each other and worked well together. We had a new superintendent. We had passed a local income tax, so we had stable funding. We'd created a reserve policy that basically has helped PPS over the last 15 years ride out some of the bumps. It would have been much worse. We also brought a lot of accountability to the central office and transparency, so we implemented an internal auditor. And we got rid of the golden parachutes that they'd been offering, all the senior administrators. So I felt like I had done a lot of work, and if you, if your measurement, and really change the course of the district back to a much better path, and if you stayed till the work was done, you'll never leave the school board. So I felt, I was, you know, we recruited new school board members, they were working well together, it was, you know, time to hand off the baton.
Okay. Great. Josie?
Hi. I want to be dealing with a still young and very bumpy, yet quiet and good puppy dog. My name is Josie Simonis. I use they/them pronouns. I will be on the ballot as Joseph Simonis, that's my legal name, but pretty much everybody refers to me as Josie. I am a career scientist. I have a PhD in ecology from Cornell University. I, most recently before being in Portland, was in Chicago, working as a scientist, and then moved out here in 2015 to take a job with a fisheries consulting company in Gresham. I have trained and have expertise in academic and educational and nonprofit governance through my time at Cornell, my time at Lincoln Park Zoo, where I was a postdoc, and before then. I am currently now a small business owner. I have started my own statistical data science company that basically allows me to structure my time as I see fit. And I'm more or less modeling my time after a faculty member, an R1 faculty member, because that's what I was trained to do. And so that involves research, teaching, mentorship, advocacy, outreach, and administrative work. And so I recently had sort of set myself up well enough with my position to be able to engage more and figure out where best to put my energy and my training and expertise in administration. I know not everybody has an interest or a desire to be in governance, or to be involved in governance, but everybody has a stake in it. And I know that my training has the potential to create really positive change, and that's what I'm trying to do here. So it was in that context that a friend of mine, who I play roller derby with, who is a parent and a grandparent of PPS students, and reached out because Tom was stepping down, nobody had put in their name yet, and said, "We need someone from Zone 6." And I was like, "Oh hey, that's me. Oh hey, I have this experience. Oh, looking at PPS, looking at the situation of public institutions in Portland, there's a lot of inequities that still exist. There's a lot of opportunity for me to do really good, positive change, and to leverage the skills that I have to actually get some positive work done." And so that's kind of the context and why I stepped into this race as a candidate. And what I'm really, the platform that I'm really running on is equity and accountability. And I say those two words together because Portland, and PPS specifically, have really good, laudable ideas about what equity looks like and what accountability looked like. But in terms of our educational system, it's not playing out. We're still seeing massive racial disparities, massive disparities based on whether students have special needs or not, or their economic backgrounds. And that means that the district has a lot of work to do in terms of making sure that they're actually holding themselves accountable to their ideas of educational equity. And so that's sort of the context and the background for my candidacy, and what I'm hoping to really kind of focus on.
Okay. Great. Thanks. So Julia, you concluded your remarks by saying you could stay on the board forever because the work is never done. You know, we've seen lots of reporting over the past few years that compares Portland's results in things like attendance, graduation rates, all sorts of metrics, where other districts that are almost as large, like the within or Salem, do better than Portland, even though they, certainly in Salem's case, have an even lower SBS than our district. So, big picture, what's wrong with this district?
Well, those districts also, in some cases, have a lot less money than PPS. So I want to take away the issue of, we don't have enough money, as a reason why we can't, we're not performing at the level we should be performing. And I think there's, the differences in some of those other districts that compare, that do better with similar students, or maybe even students with a more diverse background, and less money is because they have some key things in place. I think that most of them have had, you know, strong, accountable leadership in the superintendent's office. I mean, a great example, PPS should go be learning from North Clackamas District, the National Superintendent of the Year, there with a really strong central office team. So you have, you have strong, accountable leadership, that's transparent. In addition, all those districts, I think one thing that is, that you'll find is, they have systems. And Portland, we have pockets of excellence, and, but there's not a system in which, that our students get a consistent level of support. The fact that, I would be very surprised if other school districts had the level of inequality in the course offerings amongst their high schools, or their middle schools, or their middle grades. And I think one of the chief jobs to get Portland performing better is to have a set of systems in which, no matter where you're in school, that you're getting, the students in school, that they have access to a similar rigorous and relevant curriculum, that teachers and principals are getting professional development, coaching, mentoring. So there's not this, you know, it really depends on how well you're going to do, or the school's going to do, based on, you know, who your principal is, or the classroom teacher you happen to get, or, you know, what the parent community happened to do. So I think a lack of systems, a lack of leadership, and frankly, I'm going to just sort of put finger the school board in the sense of, they have not provided, their role is to oversee the superintendent, and hold the superintendent and the superintendent's direct results, direct reports accountable. And that hasn't been the case. The board got out of its sort of role that it's supposed to have, and got to be more of a cheerleader for the superintendent. And I think in other districts, that's not the case.
Over what period of time are you talking about, they've been cheerleading for the superintendent?
Well, at least...
Do you feel like there's been a change in the last two years?
I think there has been some change, but not enough. And so one of the reasons why I'm optimistic about the district's future is, I think there'll be three, there'll be three new community leaders who will allow the board to reset how it does its work. Because sometimes you can have good, you know, accountable members of the board, but if you don't have four of them, it's awfully hard. Like, one person cannot change...
You know, we saw, we saw an election in the last cycle, an election that was essentially a referendum among Carol Smith. And the people who were most critical of Superintendent Smith won, and then they didn't do anything. So there's often this sense around election times, you need to do what you've just said, hold the board more accountable, hold the superintendent more accountable, instill more rigor, look at systems, try and adopt best practices from other districts, then it doesn't happen. And in part, it seems as if there's a sort of regulatory capture that happens. You go in as a board member, whichever one of you wins, and all of a sudden, all your information's coming from staff and the superintendent, and they tell you everything's great.
Well, I can tell you, as a board member, that will not happen. And that's not how I, was, when I was on the board before, that's not at all what I did. What I tried to do is get out in the schools, listen to people who actually had real information, so parents, teachers, school secretaries, the people who really know what's happening on the ground. And I think the way, and, you know, I always view with a critical eye the information you get from the central office. And I don't want to say that people in the central office have bad intentions, or are not, don't care about our students. But I think it's super important to be listening to the community, that's a key role of a board member. And I can just say, my track record from before, there's nothing to indicate that that's what I would do when I got on the board. In fact, I'm sure there's some people who are worried about me getting on the board, because they know what my track record was before, and how I've engaged as a parent leader and an activist on the outside, which is really hold people accountable. Even if they were people I supported when they ran, or...
Yep.
Julia, what do you feel like the in-arm superintendent has accomplished in his transition year?
So, essentially, you know, keeping schools open. And I think he's done some things structurally, internally, and I think that more on the operational side, which I think has been important. A couple of things, that if you looked back a year and a half ago, I think people would have said, facilities and the operation side of the district wasn't very transparent or accountable. Certainly all the things that had happened with the lead in the water, and sort of the health and safety issues, that there wasn't, Carol wasn't providing any sort of direction or oversight, or clear guidance or leadership. And I think Bob has delegated wisely, and given Youssef and Courtney and the team there the authority and support to get things running on the facility side of things. And he's also making some changes on the instructional side. So from an organizational structure, having three assistant superintendents didn't make any sense, so I think he's moving in the right direction on that side. And I think hopefully he'll hand the district off to the new superintendent in a way in which the new superintendent is not left with a whole host of problems. But that means he still has some work to do.
So Zach, you've listened to somebody who's been part of the district as a parent, a board member for a long time, she brings a lot of knowledge. So why would you be a better choice for voters than Julia?
So I think, and I want to just say, that everything Julia just said is, a lot of it is on target, and it's what I've been wanting to hear from school board candidates, that I haven't necessarily heard thus far. But I do think it's still too low of a bar, and too small of a vision. You bring up the example of other school districts in Oregon. Well, Oregon's a pretty poor-performing state, and we do have districts that perform better than PPS. But even setting our sights towards meeting, you know, those other districts, and being a little bit above average, I don't think that's a high enough goal in order for PPS to set for itself. And instead, that if we wanted to really, you know, drive home the importance of education and the importance of what education can provide, we should be shooting to be above the national average, and exceeding the national average. And to me, that really is the fundamental issue with equity too, right? Is if we're looking at our educational system in order to provide everybody, regardless of race, color, creed, with the advantages that they need in order to, you know, excel in the real world, then simply setting our target as, hey, you can get the same mediocre education that, you know, everybody else is getting, is just too narrow and too small of a focus. So what I really want to do is change the tenor of the school board, and the way Portland views itself, and like what it could, what it can envision its school system to be, to really try and take it to that next level, where we're not just, you know, better than average in Oregon, but we're leading the nation in an educational system.
Okay. Thanks. Josie, same question for you. Obviously Julia's the more experienced candidate in this, of the three of you, so why would you be a better choice for voters?
Totally. And I think that's always a decision to make, the experienced within the local context versus fresh eyes. And I think it's really important, you said that she's more experienced. I would definitely say more experienced here. I have worked with a variety of groups, have extensive experience and training in governance structures, and advocating on behalf of underserved and underrepresented or not-represented constituents on a small board. I have oodles of experience, but I'm new and fresh to PPS in Portland. And I think that's a really critical and important thing to highlight, is that folks that come in with experience elsewhere, but good training, and good knowledge, and good capacity, can provide fresh perspective, new ideas on how to approach existing systemic issues. And the reality of the situation is exactly what Zach just said. Yes, Portland Public is doing a better job, and has been doing a better job, but we are still at Oregon State average for graduation rates, for example, and that's the fourth lowest in the country. Right? So like, that's a really low bar. And we need to work specifically to leverage new ideas and the new capital, the new intellectual capital that's moving into Portland, to help build a school district that will actually be able to make us the body that is educating the populace here, so that they can take hold of that creative capital and human capital that exists here in Portland. And I feel like we're, there's a gross disservice that's been happening, and historically has been happening. And so fresh perspective and fresh eyes, I think, can be a huge benefit with the systemic historic inequities that have existed in Portland specifically, and in PPS specifically.
Can I respond?
Sure.
So I guess I want to add that because it could be portrayed, you know, I live in the house I grew up in, I live down the street from where I went to elementary school, I've been involved in Portland schools for a long time, but I get up every day, and my job and my other life is, I work for a global company that has to get up, in a very competitive industry, has to get up every day and, you know, go do the work, deliver results. And I think what I would say is that I have a broader vision, I know what students need to be, which is part of my urgency. I know what students need to be successful in our future economy. And I think the experience that I've had with at Nike, and also living outside of Portland, is understanding that there's a lot of wisdom other places, so it's not just here in Portland. We can tap wisdom from other places, and that I've been exposed to that, so I haven't been here all my life. But most importantly, like, I might get up and be on a call with our team in Brussels in the day, with talking to people in China, and Singapore, and Vietnam, and so I understand what, I think, what my kids, and they're, three of them are heading into the workforce, two of them already, but what they need in order to be successful. And so I think I have an understanding of what the high standards are, not just, we need to be better than Salem, or better than Newburgh.
So we've seen people like John Kitzheimer, Charlie Hales, get a chance to serve over again, essentially where they, so maybe they're bad examples, but they got to come back and do something that they had done before, serve on a, serve in a similar capacity, and they had mixed results, but they did, you know, they brought back experience. So you've been away from the board, you've been involved, but you've been away from the board for a decade, more or less. So what will you do differently this time? How will you be a different board member because of what you learned last time, and what you've learned in the intervening years?
So I think I'm a lot wiser. And that wisdom comes from, I've had, when I was on the board before, I had two kids in elementary school, and one who was on his way. And I've now been through the system, and I've been on the receiving end of PPS saying, we don't, you know, dismissing parents, and dismissing me of like, you know, your issues aren't legitimate, we don't need to provide you with that information, playing us against other parent communities. And so I think I have a few battle scars, and in fact, I have a real scar from PPS from my high school advocacy days. But so I think what I'll bring is more wisdom. I have an understanding now of like, what kids need in middle school, I think. My three kids are all very different, and I have a lot of friends whose kids have different needs. And I've now been, you know, a three-time high school parent, and in high schools on the east and the west side of the district. So I've seen disparities, I've had my kids in a Title I school. So I think that, I think I'll be a stronger board member. I think I was an effective board member, and helped turn the district around last time, but I didn't know, when you have children in elementary school, you don't know what you don't know. So I think I've learned a lot more.
So what's the one thing, if you, if you were to be elected, all three of you will work on a variety of things, but I'd like to ask you each, what is the one thing that you would like to focus on?
Or first priority, or top priority?
First and top priority. I'll let you take a crack at that first, Josie.
Yeah. So my, like I said before, my overarching campaign is for equity and accountability, and actually delivering on what we say we want in terms of equity. And I think a really important thing, to a point that was brought before, access to equal opportunities is not necessarily equity. And I think it's really important to acknowledge that equitability requires a resource distribution that isn't necessarily equal, and is counter to the way that it exists right now. And so what I would like to do very early on is set ground rules and basic practices, and work to set those collaboratively within the school board, such that any policy statement that is made comes with direct actionable items and benchmarks associated with them, and specifically associated, I would like to see a racial equity and accountability specifically addressed in a way that is more encompassing than seven or eight percent of the budget. I would like it to involve, that discussion to involve a wide variety of folks within the district, a wide variety of constituents, and actually work to figure out how best to address, again, the systemic and historic inequities with regards to opportunities and success of students of different racial backgrounds within our district.
Zach, how about your top priority?
It's revenue. And Julia said that we, she wants to dispel the notion that we don't have enough money, but we don't have enough money. To give an example, one of the things that caused, is our current situation is, we got rid of our, most of our curriculum department six or seven years ago. And there's no money, there's no additional funds in order to put that back in place. And so now our high school students are, continue to suffer with inadequate credits in order to graduate. It's like we're a household, and we threw out our pots and pans, and now we're wondering like, why we can't cook food anymore. And so we need to address the way PPS is funded, because Oregon, the state, doesn't tax or fund its educational system appropriately. And what I mean... And what I mean by that is if you look at the state funds, the two largest pie slices are education and healthcare. And so long as healthcare continues to grow above GDP growth and above inflation and cost, the state's going to keep slicing education. And that's going to put every school district in the state into the situation where they're going to need to shave 1% this year, 1% next year, 1% next year. Because of Measure Five, we've been doing that for 27 years. And that's the situation that we're in here at PPS. We need to figure out how to change that, how to address that. Julia mentioned a, a short-term local income tax that was passed in early 2000s. That's, that would be one approach. My focus for the, my term is to approach that revenue shortfall, that funding problem, and try and come up with creative solutions in order to fund PPS and Portland's education system appropriately.
Good. Julia, your?
I just want to clarify something because I didn't say that we had enough money. I was responding to Nigel's answer question.
Yeah, we got it. You said, you said relative to other districts, we actually have more.
So we have, relative to the other Oregon districts, we have more money and get worse results, which is not, which is not a good combination.
They're also underfunded, but I want to focus on that.
Yeah, Julia, what was your top priority?
My top priority, deliver on our mission of every student by name prepared for college and career participation, regardless of race, income, and zip code. And I think we only do that for part of our students. And the board has a key role of setting culture, accountability, providing the leadership and lining the budget behind it to make that happen. And it's at a very high level strategic, setting, setting that plan, working with the superintendent, and then following through to make sure the budget and the policies align behind that. And that's not happening. And then we need to create a system. I think that's the board's...
Can you be specific about how that's not happening? Are you saying that Roosevelt and Madison get less than Lincoln and Grant?
They, they do.
Okay. So how does that play itself out? Do they get less talented principals, less experienced teachers, less money for chemistry?
All those things, less, they don't, they don't get less money, but it's not equal. You want equal outcomes, not equal, you can't have equal inputs. Because some of those high schools, students that are coming there, they've been to several different schools. They've, they're not at benchmark when they get to high school. So you actually, it's not having equal inputs.
So you give more money to the Title I schools or to the schools where children?
And you have a, you have a system of supports and intentional supports. There's early warning systems so that you're being able to put supports into the schools where it's needed.
But is that fair to the kids at Lincoln and Grant if you give more money to Roosevelt than Madison?
So I fundamentally believe, this is the, this is the game that PPS played with the parent coalition of saying, trying to play parents off one another. And all, all students in PPS deliver a, deserve a base level education. So let's just take high school because there's a whole other piece you could talk about, middle school. But high school, they all deserve to have college prep classes, no matter what school, whether it's AP, IB, dual credit. They also all deserve to have relevant sort of hands-on CTE-type classes because there's kids at Lincoln who need that, just as there are kids at Roosevelt and Madison. And so one of my most fundamental tenets will always be, we need to provide a strong, rigorous set of classes and education to all kids. And we're going to need to make additional investments for, for when there's struggling students or when there's students who frankly, you know, tag students who need, who are bored with the, getting the standard curriculum to better individualize the supports the students get. So yes, that will be added to, but should it be the kids at Grant and Lincoln don't get to have college prep classes? Because we're...
Then are you talking about more revenue?
So I think, certainly I think the system needs more revenue. And so I think it's a three-part, do you want me to provide sort of a whole answer or just say yes?
Oh, no, go ahead.
So...
No, I don't have your...
Okay, so I think there's a three-part answer. One, more state funding. So they've, at the state level, have adopted a pension plan that they just then pass those expenses on to the school district. And the school district doesn't have an opportunity, they don't have a revenue stream that can pay for the, the level of increases from the pension fund the district can. So yes, there should be more state revenue going to, to schools. Two, we have an obligation locally to pass, within the bounds of what's allowed, a local option. And then three, the money that we have, we have, this year's budget's $616 million. Is that we better spend that money well. So I think the worst possible thing the board did was a teeny expenditure, but when they gave Carol Smith a 40-something pay increase and then parents went to Salem and said, you need to fund our schools. And they said, like, why would we do that? Like, you're not spending your money, it's not focused on the classroom. So I think there's, to get new revenue, and I think our local taxpayers want that as well. We need to be able to demonstrate also that the $616 million that we're given is spent well and that we're highly accountable and that we can, it's transparent. If you look at the budget, it's an opaque document. You wouldn't know where the money went.
I'm sorry, I have to leave early for a...
Oh, are we already on time?
No, you've got the most of it.
All right. And, oh, I had one other follow-up to something you said, which was, at least one current board member believes that high schools are actually the strength of the system right now. Do you believe that to be the case? Like relative to what's going on at other schools and elementary schools?
No, this is a qualifier. I think we can do much better. I think there's some great things happening in the high schools. So the high school in Zone Six is Franklin is, there's this amazing thing's happened. They have more kids taking AP classes and those are kids who are in poverty. Those are kids who have been historically disadvantaged. They, they have an amazing set of classes and teachers who are doing great things for students and counselors who are getting kids into colleges and community colleges. So I think there's some great things, but I would say, you know, are they where they should be? Absolutely not. I mean, to Zach's point, there, there's a lot of room for improvement in terms of getting our kids ready for sort of their next steps. I'd say the weakest portion that really the board needs to spend, you know, sort of day one focuses on is the middle grades in the K eights that are under-enrolled. Because if that were happening in other parts of town, it would have ended long ago. And I think that's the place where a lot of attention needs to be focused right away.
Have you all appeared together at other?
Yeah.
Once.
Once on Tuesday.
Okay. So is there, we can start with you, Josie. Is there anything that you think is dramatically different? How do you distinguish yourself from the other candidates, either in a policy position or approach?
We're the friendly race though.
No, I, I feel like so, like I...
The other two being less friendly.
No, so I, like, I, I'm super excited about like the level of civic engagement and the level of discourse and like what we're talking about and how we're engaging in it. Like, I think I am really excited about this race. I think all three of us have really good ideas and we bring different kinds of, we bring different kinds of expertise, right? Like just as much as Julia could talk about being on phone calls across the world, I can talk about knowing exactly what it's like to be your own, your own boss, starting your own business, trying to make it in the gig economy, in the STEM economy. I know what, what training is necessary for the vast majority of our youth that are going to be trying to get jobs that aren't executive jobs right out of college. Like, that's where I am right now, right? Like, I have that kind of experience. So like, we all have different backgrounds. And I, you know, we've talked about before, like, you know, my, one of my benefits, the way I think about my newness is with a fresh perspective. Like, I don't come in unqualified with experience. I have experience, but it's been elsewhere. I, you know, I grew up in a family of, of public school teachers. I, my brother is still a public, a, a physical education teacher in a public school. We talk all the time about, we talk all the time about the, the issues with curriculum implementation. So I understand the problems and it's not with the teachers, it's always with the structures, right? Like, so we talk about the issues at Madison and Roosevelt compared to Jefferson. And Madison is getting, Madison and Jefferson, or Madison and Roosevelt are getting high FTE to student ratios, yet are still having low results. And a lot of that has to do with structural issues, not with, I mean, like, none of the schools have the right number of teachers and the right number of bodies. But the fact that we have the, the opposite relationship that we would want to see between number of bodies in a school per student and graduation rate tells me that there's issues with the system. And so fresh eyes coming in can help see that, can help bring together constituents that haven't had a voice before, haven't felt like they've been present at the table. And that's really what I want to provide. And I don't think necessarily that, you know, any one of us would be, would be bad or wrong for this position. Like I said before, I think we all bring really good heart and energy and interest in doing this job to serve all of the students of PPS. And we just have different, different spins on that and different backgrounds. And I think that's a really great, a really great position to be in where it's not, you know, like one really great person and one really evil person or something like that. I feel like this is going to be a good choice for the, a good choice for the voters to make next month.
Zach, do you want to?
Sure, yeah. So I, I want to echo a lot of what...
Key differences is the question.
Yes, yes, for sure. I want to echo a lot of what, what Josie said though. I, I would be lying if I didn't say that Julia is the obvious frontrunner in this race. She has a lot more name recognition and, and experience and that's, that's all good stuff. The key difference for me though is that I have a, I, I am an outsider and I have a big vision. I have a big vision for what, you know, our country can do, what our state can do, what Portland can do. And I, I like to say, when I first started looking at politics, I found out it's difficult to run for senator. So I, I figured I'd start local and, and start down that path. And that's really, I, the, what you're, the difference that you're going to hear from me is a, a consistent message that we need to fund PPS appropriately and that PPS needs to deliver to the taxpayers what that funding is going to do. And there will be a, a, in alignment with the board, an alignment with either our existing strategic mission, which Julia mentioned earlier, or a new one that more accurately represents the goals and aspirations that we have for our school system. That's, that's the message, that's what I think differentiates me from my opponents. And I'm just going to keep saying it.
Well, I want to first say that I really applaud Josie and Zach getting in the race. I think serving on the school board is the best way you can contribute to your community. And I also think it's the hardest political job in the country. So I've worked in Washington DC for the US Senate. I've also worked in the Oregon Legislature. So I've seen sort of politics at all levels. And I think serving on a local school board is the hardest political job because you're dealing with the thing that makes the biggest, the things, the thing that people care most about, which is their kids and their, and their community's future. So hats off to both these guys for getting in there and putting their point of views out. And I think they've, they have, they will bring fresh ideas if they're on the board to the work. The thing that I think that will distinguish me is I have a 20-plus year record. People aren't going to know what, what they're going to get. Most of that has been outside the system, not, not in it. But when I was in it, I was effective and I held the, I think broader organization accountable to, to students and their parents. Portland Public Schools is a large, complex organization. It's $1.6 billion all-funds budget, 7,000 employees. And I think that having somebody who knows how the system works from having been a leader of it and having been basically kind of blocked out by the, the current board or the, in the previous administration, that, that I can make a real difference. And I think people will know what they're going to get and that's strong leadership and effective leadership for, and not just, not just experience, because I, I totally agree. Like, experience in and of itself can be good and bad. But I think what I'll bring is a track record of really delivering for students.
Well, thank you all for coming in. I have, we have one last question.
Is this a superhero question?
I guess it was the year you ran in the past. But we ask a question at the end that we hope will be fun for you, but it's designed to bring out personalities. So this year it is because it's all school board races. What would your high school yearbook have said about you? What superlative would you have gotten, like, you know? Most popular, class clown, like?
Like in reality or in hindsight, retrospect?
What do you mean?
So like, what did, what did it actually say or what would it say now looking back?
You can, you can answer either.
Cool. Yeah, so I'm happy to go first. So I have this really great, I love that I still have it, this sports memorabilia, this plaque from when I was in high school. And I was the, because I identified as a male at the time and I don't now, I was the male of the male and the female student athlete of the year for my class. So that was, like, I was...
What'd you, what'd you play?
So I played football, wrestling, and baseball. I did baseball until my junior year and I switched to track. I lettered in multiple sports. I was the salutatorian of my high school. I was super involved. I think a lot of that has to do with the community that I was brought up in and the support system that I had around it. So I know that a lot of that comes from the privileges that I had in my life. But yeah, like, for me, I like to think of myself as somebody who is, like, and I'm a, you know, I play roller derby on a world championship team. Like, I do that as well as this intellectual stuff. I can be somebody who is engaged in multiple parts of an educational and academic community. So I think that was something that was, that I was voted or selected for. And I think that still rings true today.
Thank you.
So it's funny because I'll tell you what it said in my yearbook and you can go back and go Washington Monroe. So I was the most athletic. So I, that's really what kept me, I liked school, but I also really loved sports. And so I was a five-sport, 12-varsity letter athlete. And I think the things that I loved about sport is like the team. I like getting, so it's all about getting results. So there's a clear at the end of the day, a winner and a loser. And I liked being part of a team and the strategy and working hard and discipline. So all those things. So that's what it would have said, I think, if you asked people now. So I'm still a runner and things, but if you ask people now, I think they would more describe me as like strategic and tough and persistent. So like most persistent or...
It's a good quality in a school board member.
It's got to be like a dog with a bone sometimes.
At least at PPS.
I also played a bunch of sports. But then sophomore year, everyone got way bigger than me. So I stopped playing sports. And I, I became a theater kid. And I, I acted and we did musicals, so I sang and danced and that whole thing. But, but what I really loved doing was, was set construction. And so I was, I was the master carpenter for a number of plays, overseeing all of that, you know, the whole set construction. And there was an award that we would give out for like the most crucial member of the, of the crew team, which was the golden hammer. So it might be a little specific to my high school, but that's what my yearbook would say.
I would really appreciate you all coming up.
Can I actually ask a question of the, the two of you, given, especially given that we're all like athletes by background and stuff? Can we all agree on the record that 30 minutes of PE every other week is insufficient for anybody's, anybody's educational background? Like, sports are great, but like, we need to be getting, we need to be supporting our students like being physically active as part of the, the class day, not as part of, not as part of sports, not as part as recess, but like in the actual classroom.
So totally agree. In fact, in 2000, 10, 10 years ago, I helped pass the bill that required PE in Oregon schools and that we gave them 10 years.
10 years and they haven't planned for it.
And they haven't done it. Well, this is an, an interesting thing because Portland hasn't really done anything and yet Beaverton has, you know, is leading the way. And, you know, again, they have the same or less money than Portland and they're prioritizing it. Frankly, all the research shows that active kids like learn better.
Researchers show that.
I'll join them.
Research showed that 10 years ago when that law was passed.
Yeah, let's just show like, we ended all in consensus.
Yes.
Good to see you again.
Nice to see you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
So where's your brother a PE teacher at?
Northern Illinois.